To call this meeting to order, we have the prayer and the pledge by Councilwoman Deedee Johnson-Reed.
Okay, I thought it was. No, I did it last time. That's why I thought it was Deedee. It's okay. We're gonna go with it. We're gonna say the Lord's Prayer.
All right.
Name of the Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen. Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen. In the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas.
President.
Councilmember Brooke Marquardt.
Here.
Councilmember Marlon Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember David Broussard. Councilmember Deidra Ledbetter.
Here.
Councilmember Deedee Johnson-Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Dustin Swier.
Here.
Thank you. Item one's public comment. I don't see that we have any cards. Oh, we do. Well, I'll remind you to put your phones on vibrate, and there's no going back and forth. It's only for us to hear the comments. Madam Clerk.
Richard Phillips, our agenda item number 5A.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I know Mr. Edward Landry from about eight months ago. I want to give a good shout out to Mr. Landry. I think he'll be fine to continue whatever you want him to continue. I'd also like to apologize to this body. The last time I was here, I was a little rude. It was at the end of the meeting, and I asked you to stay for me to make a few comments. And I was particularly rude to, I think, Deedee, because I pointed out that we had a difference of an opinion on something. So I won't use the rest of my three minutes. That's all I really have to say.
Thank you, sir. All right. Madam Clerk, item two.
Acceptance of the minutes of June 15, 2021, as published on June 27, 2021.
Do I have a motion? Motion by Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Deedee Reed. Any further discussion? Any discussion? Hearing seen none. Please vote your machines. Thank you all. Item three.
Raymond Shudu Lewis, school board member for District Four, to address the council.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I appreciate the opportunity to address the council on my son's Garan Paul Atkinson Lewis on his foundation, how our events when we rode it out on Father's Day weekend, the Friday night, was such a success. I wanted to come where I could get a large crowd, and we are televised, something me and Freddie and David Broussard fought for immediately when we got on the council televised meetings. But I want to thank everyone who contributed. Trying not to call names, but I know we met with the mayor initially, Honorable Judge Trey Hike, and they really thought what we were trying to do, and that's to deal with at-risk youth in our city. Because I referred to, in an article I did, as New Iberia as a broken city. But things have to fall sometimes before we can get back up again. And it's time for not duplicate services, any services that can come in and help make our community a better, a safer place, and a more attractive place to have people move here, get good businesses, create good jobs, and live in a safe city. Again, it was so many people that I could thank, but I'd like to thank those who participated and who could participate. We achieved our goal. Anyone that's still interested in donating can go to simply GPALfoundation.org. It's on your front page. That page was designed, created by a New Iberian. She's in her third year of law school at LSU, and her name is Tatianna McWherther. Our administrators for the Garan Paul Atkinson Lewis Foundation are Tara and Lee and Tatianna McWherther. They have a proven record in this city. The mayor's after-school program that we had so many years of success with, they took their, what they were doing off of Hopkins and brought it into the city through the parks and recreation. Because Dominique is back there, so she can attest, and then the mayor is knowledgeable. But that's who's leading the helm, as well as they played a very important role in helping create secure funding for teen court. That's our main goal, not our only goal. But we want to give the city court back something that Judge Hike desires to have back. And we believe we are in a position to do that. With that said, I'd like to thank Iberia Parish, the City of New Iberia, the City of Generec, Familian Parish, Acadia Parish, St. Martin Parish, and all around Acadiana for forgiving, participating, and helping us who just want to simply give back. My son was about 11 years old. I was on the city council then. We we had never seen or remember seeing this picture, just a kid from New Iberia. So that tells me a couple of things, fellas and ladies. My son was proud of this city at 11 years old, and he evidently was real proud of what his daddy was doing, trying to help this city grow and move forward and be fair with everyone. Might not agree on everything, but I was fair. So I thank y'all. I didn't mean to get emotional, but this is still tender, and it's gonna be tender in our hearts. And his life, his simple life, impacted a lot of people throughout Acadiana. And with his life, though it was taken tragically, the Garan Paul Atkinson Lewis, we're gonna make all he stood for live on. And to say, and I'll put in my seat with this here, to say, was he perfect? No. To say he wasn't cunning, clever, or connie, yes, he was. Yes, he was. But he was a joy for all who knew him and met him. And one thing he would do with trouble, he'd run away. I have four other children, and they've been brought up with a strict hand. I've never had to go get any of them out of jail or bond any of them out. And I didn't have to even do it with him. He would tell me sometimes, oh, Daddy. Oh, man, something's, you couldn't have been like that with my other brothers and sisters. I said, well, Nuki, I call him Nuki. I said, Nuki, you just go ask him. I says, and you kind of getting a break because it's a generational thing, I understand. But again, anyone who wants to do anything, if it's volunteer, GPALfoundation.org. And thank you, Mayor and Council, for having me and allowing me this opportunity to present my thank you and my family's greatest thank you to all who participated and those that couldn't. But their prayers were with us on June 18. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Shudu.
Thank you.
And Shudu, I'd just like to say thank you and your family, you know, to take a tragedy and to turn it into something positive, to turn it into something good that you are doing, that is happening, to be able to bring teen court back and to be able to put some funds into that and work with Judge Hike on that. From the first meeting we had, I mean, we really realized, you know, what a gift that would be. So I got to attend the event. It was very, very well done. I think this is only the beginning, and we look forward to partnering with, you know, you, your family, the organization, and any other organization that has that goal that we all have, which we sit up here to make our city better. So anything that someone wants to come and contribute and put their time, their energy, their name on it, their family's legacy on it, that we can work together to make this place a better place, I mean, who can ask for more than that? So thank you. Moving on, 4A.
Public hearing on ordinance number 2021-11, an ordinance levying millages on the 2021 tax rule on all properties subject to taxation by the City of New Iberia.
I need a motion to open our public hearing.
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Deedee Reed and a second by Councilwoman Lewis. Do we have any public comment on this item? Hearing and seen none. I need a motion to close a public hearing.
So moved.
Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas and a second by Councilwoman Ledbetter. Thank you all very much. I didn't ask you to vote on it. Item 5A.
Resolution 21-56, reappointing Edward Landry to serve on the Municipal Fire and Police Civil Service Board for a term of three years.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Swier and a second by Councilwoman Marquardt. Is there any discussion on this item?
Is he gonna appear before the council? We had talked about them appearing.
I didn't ask him to, and you're right, and in the future, we will do that. I kind of forgot we were gonna put that policy in place. Thanks for reminding me.
Okay.
I can speak for Edward that he's done a very good job, and he's served, you know, on our board and has done very well. It's the reason that I put him up to, you know, be reappointed, but you're right. In the future, we will ask people who are, we're gonna vote on to come.
Okay.
May I, is this the attorney Edward Landry?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Anybody else? Then I would ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you all. Madam Clerk, 5B.
Resolution 21-57, declaring Juneteenth Day a legal holiday in the City of New Iberia.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Who was first on that one? Okay, then we have a motion by Councilman Lewis and a second by Councilwoman Marquette. Do we have any discussion on this item?
Very glad to see we're gonna give the people in the city a holiday.
Oh, yes, ma'am. Yeah, that'll be, that'll be our 14th holiday. We have 14, so that'll
Paid holiday.
Yeah, that'll be number 14 of paid holidays. But the governor put that in place, and we knew we wanted to do it. It doesn't go into effect till next year.
Right.
So, but
Well, as an African American, I'm glad to see that we're gonna recognize it and that the people, the city employees will actually get a some benefit from it.
Yes. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
I want to dito Deedee's thoughts, but I also want to say, when I called you, funny story, soon as it came out, it's like me, Deedee, and me, Deedee, and Ms. Ledbetter were calling Freddie all at the same time. You know, we all were talking about making this happen, and from what I got from Deedee and I got from Ms. Ledbetter, you know, the mayor embraced it, and, you know, this is where we at. So thank you for embracing that, following suit with the national, with the federal and the state, you know, governments. So.
Certainly. And our employees weren't upset about adding another day either. I'll just have to work them harder the other day, you know?
It is a paid, it's a paid holiday.
Yes, like I said, we have 14 paid holidays now.
Awesome.
Anybody else? Well, then I would ask you to please vote your machines. All right, thank you all. 5C.
Resolution 21-58, declaring sound equipment from council chambers as surplus and authorizing its disposal.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas and a second by Councilwoman Marquette. Is there any discussion on this item? Yes, sir.
I remember the intent was to donate it to Generec, but I thought we had spoke about it already. Is that still in place?
Yeah, but I don't think they need it now because they upgraded their system. So since they don't need it, we'll probably just be disposing of it.
Okay. All right. I meant we had made the discussion.
Oh, we had. No, no. And it was a worthwhile cause, but they got a new system.
So when you say dispose of, do you mean like sell it? Maybe somebody in the public might want to buy some?
After we declare, you know, surplus or disposed property, then, you know, we could give it to someone else if we wanted to. We could dispose of it. We could donate it to somebody else. But we have to go through the motions of, you know, declaring that we're getting rid of it. But, you know, it's not a great system. It, you know, we know one mic doesn't work because the whole time Brooke was here.
Just a thought. I mean, the Boys and Girls Club setting up at the West End, they don't need a P A system? Or I'm just thinking outside the box?
I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I mean, it's all boxed up, so it's not, you know.
I just wouldn't want to see it trashed if some of them, most of them work.
If I can find a use for it, I will, but, you know.
Well, I know at the Western, we don't really have a P A system at all, any kind of system where we have meetings or large gatherings. It would be nice so people can kind of walk up to a mic or something.
It is pretty antiquated, though. I mean, we'd have, we already have one mic down, so we'd have six mics to throw away as they go out. But I mean, it is pretty antiquated.
Right. It's also a way that we could actually even introduce this type of technology to the kids and just teach them about public speaking, all of that.
I mean, like I said, it's boxed up. It's not hurting anything.
Okay, all right. So dispose doesn't mean trash.
Well, I'll ask Jeff as a legal question. Once we vote to dispose of this, am I obligated to destroy it, or can I do something else with it?
No, we could use it.
That's what I thought. We can still use it. It's still ours. It just won't be used in this council chambers.
Yeah, we can use it.
Okay. Well, then I'll keep it boxed up, and you'll tell me what you want to do with it.
Excellent. Thank you.
Anybody else? Then please vote your machines. Thank you. 5D.
Resolution 21-59, granting the authority to the mayor to sign and submit all necessary documents along with adopting certain policies, plans, and procedures in connection with the fiscal year 2021 Community Development Block Grant Program for a sewer system improvements project.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Marquardt and a second by Councilwoman Ledbetter. Is there any discussion on this item?
Yes.
So, yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead. She can go first. I'll go after.
Yeah.
So is this the money that I've been waiting on for Acadian Acres to revamp the sewage system, or is this just a pump?
It's not. We can bring Vince up, but it's not, it's not your money. No, ma'am. No, well, I mean, you know, but let's get Vince up and talk about what we're doing.
I see Santa Inez.
Yeah, your money's already there.
So this is the pump, though, in my neighborhood, right? Acadian Acres or no?
Separate grant.
Totally separate grant.
That money is approved. The project is being designed as we speak.
Yeah, you come before this project.
You're done.
You're done.
The amount of getting it designed and bid it out.
Okay.
So that million dollars is done. This is for 2023.
Next year. We loading the pipe, we loading the pipe for the next one.
Gotcha. Okay.
Application for general sewer maintenance, right?
I know, literally. I know it doesn't move fast enough for you, but we work on it.
I still get the calls. Y'all know I get them calls.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
We do too. We do too.
It's under design.
Okay.
Moving along.
So what is this for?
Move sewer rehab.
So is that Ms. Deedee's area?
Well, no, so this is, my next question is about
She still has the floor.
Oh, yes, I will give it to her because I thought it was my area.
Okay.
I saw Santa Inez somewhere in there, and I'm like, oh, wait, I have a Santa Inez street in my district, so I wasn't sure. Okay.
Okay.
Done.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think I understand this is a community development block grant, and so it's supposed to be used for low income and moderate income sewer issues. At least that's the way we're using it today.
All we, all we've ever done is apply for that for sewer, at least since I was on the council. We haven't done anything except sewer grants with it because we have such a need. So that's why, if you look up, a community block grant can be used for other things. But we have always used it for sewer because it's the only money we had to keep doing those rehabs. But yeah, that's what this money is.
Okay, so my, according to some of my constituents, and again, I wasn't here, so I'm just taking what I've been told. I've been told that at one point, this grant was not used just for sewer. It was actually used for community development, fixing homes, and
It might have been, but I was, I know, I know the whole time I was the pro tem, so I was the pro tem graciously for two terms. I got to do that, so that was eight years. Then I was off for four years, so that's 12. And then I've been the mayor for four years, so for the last 16 years, all we've ever done with it is sewer because we've had these conversations many times with council members saying, you know, we're ever gonna use it for anything else? Until something comes along that lets us fund the sewer in another way, this is really the only way that we have successfully gotten about a million dollars every year to go toward these major issues.
Okay, so the map that actually, thank you, Vince, for sending me the map. So
Don't you have the map?
Yeah, so
We can put the map on the screen.
Oh, okay, cool.
We might as well use all this money we spent, you know?
So first of all, let me say that I do see that most of my district is included in this. So that's absolutely very much appreciated. However, there's, I'm just wondering why, because it says low income and moderate income, how we actually get to include Main Street and parts of across the bayou? Because there's definitely still some of a need more going toward the West End. And I'm just trying to understand because when I read the grant, it says low income and moderate income.
Okay, I can kind of answer that.
Okay.
We have some consultants, two consultants that we hired to work on these projects, and they know the rules of the game of these applications. So basically, what they do is they come to me when the mayor says, yes, I want to use it for sewer. And they say, okay, Vince, where are your problem areas? So I will point out problem areas within the city. And they say, well, this won't work because it was in a grant area X amount of years ago, or this will work. And when they, we bounce off of each other, those areas in most need, those areas that will qualify, and those areas that have already received grants to come up with these target areas. So yes, you're right, there are some relatively higher income, but the only way we can get, and there are problem areas in those higher income areas, the only way we can get those areas are to incorporate the other areas, if that makes sense. And then when you look at a bigger, larger area, you can concentrate on those problems within a larger area, if that makes sense. So they, the way these consultants map this out, it's somewhat complex. I don't know all the ins and outs, but that's basically a summary of what they do.
Right. I'm assuming they use like the census tracts to kind of figure out income, you know,
Absolutely.
ranges and stuff in the different areas.
Lots of data, lots of data, a lot of statistics.
And we're constantly trying to fix the worst sewer areas.
Right.
Okay. Okay, so now you're definitely trying to fix the most. So how is that? How do you determine what's the worst sewer? Is it complaint driven?
Absolutely.
Okay, so I can tell you that I have constituents who complain about sewer. They say things like, I don't call anymore because nothing ever gets done. So should I be telling my constituents that every time they start seeing these problems, they should be making phone calls? Because
Absolutely.
they actually need to get the sewer fixed, but they don't, they're not gonna qualify based on this map just because they're, they're not calling anymore?
Not on this particular grant, but I can assure you, every area in the city has received L C D B G monies in the past, right? So, so when we look at that, and depending on where the problems are, we fixed a lot of problems. I know there are still a lot of problems out there, and we always will. Because you can fix it today, and it'll be broken tomorrow. It just, it is what it is. So yes, part of what we do as the application is compile a database of complaints. And we provide that to the consultants to provide to the state so they can review that. And that plays a big role in the state's decision on whether it gets funded or not. So yes, they need to call in if they're still having complaints. I mean, Brooke's area, she's more, she just stated it, right? She's still getting calls, right? And that area has received a million dollars, right? That area is not in this, in this project area, which concerned her. Her area is already taken care of with a million dollars. We're gonna spend it. Hopefully, that's gonna fix the problem. We're gonna do the analysis and the modeling and make sure. But, you know, it's, it's an ongoing, we can't fix everything at once. But yes, they need to call in.
Okay.
And keep in mind the size of the city, and keep in mind that we've already gone around with a million dollars at a time all over the place. There's not hardly any areas we've not cast the net on at least once, and we still have many, many issues. I might be an ugly, but when you have a town as old as our town is, as old as those clay pipes are, we keep getting the money, we're gonna fix the areas we can in a bigger net that we can cast, but it's never finished. I don't mean to be flippant, but we go around and around and around. And we've gotten, how many of these? We've probably gotten 15 million dollars in these?
More than that. I mean, since I've been here
Yeah, you've been here longer than me.
Twenty-eight million dollars on a new plant and a pump station, and another 30 million fixing sewer, right?
And a lot of it a million at a time.
Right, absolutely.
So if you went, if you cash in that 30 times, a million dollars at a time, and we're not finished, then the whole town gets touched many times.
Right.
You know?
No, I get it.
With each sweep, you know?
What I want my constituents and probably all the constituents to know is that if you're having a problem, you have to make the phone call, otherwise you're not gonna bubble up to the top.
You're exactly right. I had something unrelated to sewer that the guy quit calling in January. He contacted me, and I said, well, I thought your problem was fixed. I didn't hear from you. And, you know, and I checked it off the list. So you're right. I mean, if they don't turn it in, that's why we have computer programs to track it. That's why Vince has, you know, people who work around the clock, who are on call, as well as the other departments. But if you have an issue, if we don't know about it, you know, believe me, somebody else is calling.
Right. But I, so that's my whole point, is to make sure that they know. That's how you guys are determining the areas that need to be fixed.
Well, that's part of it. That's a big part of it.
Right, exactly.
And they need to do that. You're right.
So one more question. This is for the mayor. So we're gonna receive, I think, $10 million from Biden. A lot of that money, I think, is gonna be infrastructure. Any chance that we could use some of that for sewer and maybe use this money for rehabilitating some of these neighborhoods that are falling apart around us?
Well, not this year for sure, and I don't have the President Biden money. And I am still waiting to understand exactly. I have that book from the Treasury that I've read three times to still understand what we can do with it. We have already pegged out a whole bunch of sewer projects. We talked today, and this is more pie in the sky, but I'll tell you about it. We talked today about an opportunity with some other President Biden money coming to spend even more on sewer. My need is so great, I think it's up to 5 million. I would take a million of the package that we're getting now and try to match that to get 4 million more and be able to spend that much on sewer. So one way I can't commit to say, yeah, I'll quit doing these community block grants for sewer because our need is still really great. In other words, we could, I asked Vince today, I said, you know, one, I gotta find out that if that money can match other money, and if it can't, it can't. But if not, I'll be coming to this council to say, we have another opportunity. So let's go after 4 million, and we'll put up a million. I don't know where Kevin's at, but we'll have to figure out where we get that million from. Because that's how, it's amazing at how much money we have left to spend on sewer. So can I commit right now and say, oh, yeah, I can, I can slide that off for a year or something? I don't know that.
Okay.
Because we still have quite a few sewer issues to fix. The good thing is, I know that the President Biden package can be used for sewer. That's one of the few things I know. I don't have broadband. I don't have a water system, but I know it can be used for sewer. So the combination of continuing to go after these grants and continuing to, and if we can get creative and match some money with some money, that gives us, you know, more of a chance to do even more. Are we ever gonna be out of the woods of sewer, though? I don't think so.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure out how we actually eventually move that money back to doing some community development work because we have major issues.
We had talked about, we off subject for just a second. I'll gavel myself. But we had talked about taking some of that Biden money and probably doing something with adjudicated property that is housing and that does build back neighborhoods.
Right.
So I hadn't forgot about that, and I earmarked it, you know, to do that, but that's for another day.
Okay. All right.
Anybody else back on our issue? Uh, yeah, Ricky was next, and then
Vince, just a general comment, but I think, I think the block grants that we've received at the city was a big intricate part in that consent decree us moving it forward all the sewer repairs, wasn't it?
Absolutely, absolutely.
I don't think Deedee was aware of the consent decree that the city was under for sewer?
I wasn't here.
Yeah, yeah. So was, and maybe you want, it was a So was a, and maybe you wanted, it was a mandate, but you can explain that, but that, that played a huge part in us moving forward.
Absolutely, in, in 2006, when, when, when I was hired, it was pretty much for that consent decree, right? And, and, and basically the consent decree laid out, you will do these things or somebody will go to jail on that council, right? So, so Mayor Curry said, oh, we will do it, we will find the money. LCDBG then went strictly to sewer projects, right? And I think you are correct, there were housing projects prior to 2006, uh, housing rehab projects. But with the consent decree and she not wanting to go to jail, she shifted that to sewer rehab, right?
Okay.
Rightfully so.
Yeah, that, that makes sense.
Okay, so, so yes, um, LCDBG paid a big role, SRF played a big role, facilities planning. There were lots of different avenues that we went after money for that 30 million I was telling you about.
Yeah.
So that, that's how, that, that really worked out in favor of the city, those block grants to help that move forward. Cause we, you know, and I'd say we'd still be in it, but we'd be close, you know, just getting out of it. And you know, when you talk about a block grant and, and low income areas, you gotta remember when you look at the big picture that sewer flowing in lines, sewer flowing in lines does not know economic thresholds. It flows through the high, it flows through the low. So you know, if you don't fix the low and this high end flows through it, if you don't fix the high and the low end comes through. So you have to fix it, you know, so the whole system works. So I think we're doing a good job with block grants and I appreciate your effort.
Yeah, the only question I had, so you brought it up earlier when it comes to these grants, when you do work in a certain area, you can't use any more funding years after to go back in that certain area, what you're getting at?
You know, I'm not the consultant on it, but yes, that's my understanding. They're gonna look and say, well, we gave you money for that area or part of that area already.
So basically, if a system has 10 years on it, they use funding from a grant 10 years prior, it's gotta have, if it has more issues, we can't go back in there and use that grant money, we have to.
That's right, it's gonna detract from the rating of that project by the state, right? They're gonna rate it and that's part, I don't know how their schedule is, but that is looked at, yeah.
Cool, thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Yeah, ma'am, my, my only comment is to kinda like Dee Dee, Dee Dee's point. And Ricky answered my question. My question was basically gonna be, uh, all the sewers tied in together, basically, right? So it's kinda like Vince was explaining, when one, it, it's fair enough to say, when one part is flowing well, another part that's connected could easily break. So it's not like we picking and choosing where we're gonna fix. It's by, by port, by importance, by matter of importance.
Right.
Okay, I understand that and I remember to take the consent decree, I remember filing it in the newspaper. Uh, I was following y'all then should do, my aunt was on the council, that was a big deal. Then when we got here, one of the first things I, cause we came in 2017 and the consent decree was over in 2016. And one of the first questions I asked, ma'am, if you remember, can we use this money for community development?
I remember.
For housing, uh, because I read the grant as well. And, uh, I, I know we can't do this, but I, I see a, a past member of the council nodding that we never should, that. You know, and that they don't, they don't, they don't, I don't think they ever used it for housing as far as I even remember.
Not since 2006, as far as Vince.
And so I guess as a council, we would have to go back and look, when was the last time they used it? How much they accomplished? We gotta do some homework and see if it's worth us. Cause as a council, we can come and say, hey, the next consent, the next, uh, LCGBD money, we wanna see it put in, in the community. Can we do that as a council?
Council can do whatever it wants. I mean, you can do that.
And I'm, and I'm not saying it would be the smartest thing to do.
Right, in other words, if we still have need for sewer, and I'll point out, cause I will do my job and point out that yes, you know, if you have four votes to amend something and move the ball in that direction, you can. But on the flip side, we have this need and this is where we spend it. Then we just do our job of government and we go back and forth and we, you know, land where we land.
Right.
But, uh, you know, can you do that? Yeah, you can. Then I'll just ask you, if you do that, where are we gonna find the money to fix the sewer?
Fix the sewer.
You know, I mean, it's, it's a multi-faceted thing. But it's fair to say that anything that this council, um, that I put up can be amended, that you put up can be amended. Everything here is open in a public meeting and fully transparent and who knows where things could morph, you know? It's just a matter of, we just need to try to collectively make the best decision for our community. And sometimes putting some things off to fix other things might be, but if not, you know, if we head in another direction, we head in another direction.
I mean, I can offer this, if, if that, uh, future money comes in, uh, the, the additional CARES Act money comes in, that, that will free up the LCDBG money probably.
Okay, yeah, if we get enough of it and, you know, if they don't have a big string on it.
Recommending to you to take that.
Well, that was the whole point, that was the question, yeah.
He can't come and say, I need a million dollars out of the general fund for you to match 5 million dollars or 4 million dollars and then turn around and say, oh, I want that too. If we got all of that, but we don't have it yet, so we can't react to what we don't know. Are we gonna continue to play poker? Have we been very successful with grants? Will we continue to do everything we can to fund as many things as we can? Of course we will. It just, you know, how they're gonna play out, at this point, I don't know.
Right, thank you Vince, I appreciate all the feedback.
You're welcome.
At the.
Councilman's word.
Thank you. After listening to everything that was laid out, I mean, I have to say, if you break it down simpler, a new house on top of a bad septic is not worth a you-know-what.
Right, right.
So.
Yeah.
It's basically how you break it down, I mean.
It's true.
You can build all these extravagant things and have no plumbing, no septic.
Or all these new businesses that we attracting and all the things that we doing if our stuff didn't work, huh?
So.
Okay. So ma'am, I wasn't quite finished, but.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. No, I didn't do my closing remarks.
Alright, well.
It's okay though, but, but it's all good though. So it's fair to say, what's important to you may not be important to me and vice versa. But sewer should be important to all of us if we wanna build a better community.
It's a balanced state.
Just, I just wanna make sure that everybody's clear. The reason why I was asking the question is because I know we have some infrastructure money coming in here, 10 million dollars that might help with the sewer issues. We got some real housing issues, could we reallocate the, the grant money to do that? I'm not saying that we, we're gonna, cause we don't have the money, you can't count your chickens before they hatch, so. But I just wanted to understand, what's the opportunity here?
Yeah, cause the other thing is, what I don't wanna do, and it's 9.3 after the state takes this cut, okay? So it's not 10. The other part of it is, we're talking about a grant and the President Biden money could come and be real. So if it's real and we would say, go to adjudicated property and begin to kinda rebuild some neighborhoods with a portion of that, that really happens.
Yes.
If we say, oh, block grant, let's write a grant, we might not get it. So, you know, that's kinda, that's why let's just take it one step at a time, but yeah, our options are open.
Okay, that's all.
Anybody else? Then I would ask you to please vote your machines. Thank y'all. 5E.
Resolution 2160, approving the Purdue Pharma LP bankruptcy plan and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Councilwoman Marquardt, do I have a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Dee Dee Reed, do we have any discussion on this item? Up, we have our city attorney, yes, sir.
I'd like to explain to you what this is about.
I was gonna call on you.
We, um, the council voted some time ago to join in the lawsuits that are involved with, um, the opioid epidemic and the companies and distributors and, and, um, and drugstores and all that distributed these drugs. So we signed up with a large group of attorneys who represent other municipalities and other places. And they filed a claim for us against, and a lawsuit, joined in a lawsuit, in lawsuits against various companies. One of those companies is Purdue Pharma. Purdue Pharma has filed a bankrupt, bankruptcy proceeding, so they filed for, uh, protection of the bankruptcy code. They went bankrupt, as we say, and they have come up with a bankruptcy plan. And the bankruptcy plan sets aside some money for public bodies and some money for individual victims of the opioid crisis. The bankruptcy plan, uh, I got an email with the bankruptcy plan as an attachment along with other things. And I know Aaron got that in the city clerk's office. The plan itself is not, it's a general plan and it does not deal with New Iberia specifically. Because there are like 40 trillion dollars of claims. But the bankruptcy plan itself is 644 pages long, so it's a really complicated thing. The attorneys that, that we retained to work on this have recommended that we approve the plan. And in fact, they said that if we did not respond by, I think it's tomorrow, no, I think it's the 9th, then they would file an approval for us, but I just thought we needed to bring this before the council. I think we're gonna wind up sooner or later getting some money. I don't think it's gonna be a lot of money and I think there probably gonna be strings on it. So it's probably gonna be money that we have to spend to address opioid damages in our community. So I don't think it's gonna be for sewer or for housing or whatever, and I don't think it's gonna be a win for it. Uh, I don't know, but that's what it looks like to me. We are not reading every page of this stuff, you know, Aaron doesn't have the time and you don't have the money to pay me to do it. Because it's a ton of material, but our attorneys are recommending that we approve the plan that's going through because it has a chunk of money, 5 billion dollars or something for, um, for municipalities. And they're afraid that if this thing doesn't happen, then there won't be anything for any of us, any municipalities across the country. But it's, um, people have filed claims that are vague and indefinite, probably including us. So we don't know how much of that we're gonna get. But the attorneys that we've been dealing with have recommended that we approve the plan before that money goes away.
Thank you. Any questions, comments?
Well.
Yes, sir.
I remember when attorneys came, uh, young, the guy, I think he ran for governor, he ran for governor, I remember him, from New Orleans. They came up here and presented. The attorneys came on our council the first year.
There were several of them who came.
It was the opioid addiction, kinda like class action law.
The local guy was Joe Burke.
Yeah.
Oh, the local guy, I, but, but I remember this young guy came from New Orleans.
Yeah, I just remember Joe Burke. I don't, I remember some other people came.
Yeah, a group of lawyers, they were talking about the opioid addiction.
Yeah. Yeah, well, they've been working for us and other municipalities too. And they filed these claims and we had to provide a whole lot of information about our employees and our health insurance, our history and all this kinda stuff to them so they could file the claim for us. But we really don't know what we're gonna get out of this. But, and this is just one company that's involved. But, um, what they've said is that if, if, if the plan doesn't get approved, then the money may not be put up and that pot of money might go away. So they said, before it goes away, we need to join in with the other municipalities to approve the plan and that's what they're recommending.
I have some other thoughts, I'm gonna stick on my table.
Okay.
Oh, that's totally up to you.
This body can't help with that.
Okay.
I was about to say, I, I'll say it then, just for the public. I wish they filed a lawsuit against the federal government for the invasion of crack cocaine in our community and give money to our community to rehab our community, cause that's what destroyed our communities.
Amen.
We need a class action lawsuit on that.
Yes.
Thank you. Anybody else have any other comments? Then I would ask you to please vote your machines. Thank y'all. Now we move on to 6A.
Introduction of Special Ordinance Number 2020 dash 2021 dash 09, amending the budget to reflect year-to-date actuals for General Fund, Budget Amendment Number 8.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by the Mayor Pro Tim, Ricky Gonsalas, and a second by Councilwoman Ledbetter. Is there any discussion on this item?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
So do we know why the election costs have gone up 51,000 dollars?
Cause that's the bill we got. Uh, no ma'am, I, I don't exactly know why it went up as much. We had figured it would have been a little less than that. Kevin, do you have any light you can shine on that?
So I thought we were thinking 18,000.
No, I thought, well, like if you do a citywide election by yourself, I thought it was 38,000.
Okay.
But I don't, I didn't remember it was 51 either.
We had, um, when we did the budget, we had projected one election, but then we had that, um, Ad Valorem.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That went, and then we also have a upcoming, um, election to replace the marshal that we have the budget for.
And that's in there too?
Yes.
Yeah, how much did you put in for that one?
Uh, I think it was about 10 to 12. The last, and, uh, Ad Valorem was 30 something thousand.
Yeah, 30 something thousand. I had remembered a citywide when I thought it was 30. Why will that other one, it's not by itself? Is that why it'll be cheaper?
Uh, it's what we had budgeted for the previous one, the original one we had.
Cause if that election is by itself, then we have to come back.
Yeah.
For, for, if it's 38 citywide, like I thought it was, it'll be 38 again next time, you think? There's nothing to share that election with.
I don't know. I don't know if we.
Okay, well, we're just, I want to prep you all that we'll probably be coming back. If 10's in for that one, we'll be coming back from, for more, for that election. Anything else?
And the principal payments are 125?
Fire truck.
Is that the fire truck?
Bond, bond money in the fire truck.
Okay, excellent. I just noticed it wasn't in the budget, so.
Uh, we had good revenue, uh, that came in from the occupational licenses. And then that's why, that's why if you look, it's almost a net, uh, when you look at what we're really amending the budget for, it's not much money.
No, not at all.
Because we have that revenue at the top and then to offset it, we had the bond payment for the fire truck and, uh, the election. I mean, there's a few other little things, but that's.
Yeah, but no, I mean, yeah, the extra revenue.
Right.
That helped. Okay.
Anybody else? Then I'd ask you to vote your machines. Thank y'all very much. Alright, second page. Item 7A.
Ordinance 2021 dash 11, an ordinance levying millages on the 2021 tax rule on all properties subject to taxation by the City of New Iberia.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Marquardt and a second by Councilwoman Reed, do we have any discussion? Seeing none, please vote your machines. Thank y'all very much. Alright, now we head to property standards, Jimmy. And we have quite a few tonight. Ready? Okay. 8A.
Resolution 21 dash 61, declaring that the buildings at address 714 Ann Street, New Iberia, Louisiana, 70560, District 5, is in a dilapidated and dangerous condition and set for, set date for public hearing on October 5th, 2021.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do, motion by, motion by Councilwoman Reed, a second by Councilwoman Ledbetter. I'll turn it over to Jimmy, you, you got it on the screen?
Ask Jimmy how this was working before we walked in here?
It was working fine before. Okay, how do you get that up? Alright, great, Jimmy?
It's a trailer, it's, uh, the roof is caving in.
Okay.
This is just set in for the public hearing.
I know. I know. And this is District 5.
Yep.
Wait, Jeff's got his hand up. Yes, sir.
We have a thinker revised resolution, cause the land is assessed in one name and the trailer's assessed in another. So we're gonna have to give notice to both. So that's a revision that Aaron made that's on the desk.
Oh, okay, that's what that is, okay.
This is for public hearing, correct? So the property don't?
The public hearing is tonight.
Alright.
It'll be October the 5th.
Right, right, but have the landlords been contacted of yet?
Not yet.
Okay, not yet, okay.
First step, first step, first step, okay.
Yeah, as soon as Jeff gets, Jeff gets me who to notify, like he's saying this one's gonna have to.
Okay, got you.
We'll notify him and then.
Yeah, this is our first step.
Yeah.
Any, yes, ma'am. No, I know, any, any discussion on this?
Nope, it's, it's a hazard, it needs to be removed.
Okay. So I have a motion and a second, no other discussion, uh, please vote your machines. Thank you. 8B.
Resolution 21 dash 62, declaring that the building at address 1612 Bryan Street, New Iberia, Louisiana, 70560, in District 4, is in a dilapidated and dangerous physi- condition and to set date for public hearing on October 5th, 2021.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Ledbetter, do I have a second?
Second.
Councilman Lewis. Jimmy?
Now, it's, it's falling apart. When it's all of us deciding, it's kind of offensive in spots. It's just.
Okay. Any comments?
Oh, it needs to go.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, Jeff? Okay, well, then I'll, I'll call you after.
I just wanna say for all these resolutions or for each of them, the resolution, Aaron and I talked about this today, we need to give notice to the owners of the property. So we name an owner, but that's not the only people we may be giving notice to.
Okay.
So it's gonna be upon the owners, whoever it is. And this one, the mobile home, is in the assessment. So it looks like it's the same owner.
Okay. Can I ask you a question?
Yeah, Brooke, Brooke has the floor and then I'll give it to you.
I just need clarification. Okay, what we put on Civic Source, is it just the land? It's never a structure?
Oh, no, we sell, we sell whole buildings on Civic Source. We have, we, they, they don't sell trailers.
Okay, so that's why we would never put this on Civic Source?
Right.
Okay.
Right, they, I don't think we sell any trailers. Um, that I know of, we haven't sold any yet. It's all been houses.
But you could sell the land, right?
Yeah, we could sell the land, then you have to deal with it, with the trailer. You know, cuz it might be a separate owner and that's a movable. Um, not saying we couldn't, but I don't think we have yet.
Okay, I guess I just didn't know if it would like save us money, like how we have to put up money to demolish these eventually if no one comes forth. Um, I didn't know why we weren't putting them on Civic Source. I was just trying to see what makes a property go there and what makes a property go here.
Okay.
Uh, the Civic Source property is adjudicated.
Yeah, and some of it is, some of it is, yeah, and some of it's a time thing, okay? You have, you have property that people are not taking care of, but they might be paying their taxes on it, okay? So that'll show up, it's not adjudicated to the city, they're paying their taxes.
Okay.
But it's, it's still not, it's still here because it breaks our other ordinances. It's not safe, it's not in a good condition. The adjudicated property is what we fool with Civic Source. And then you have to wait between one and five years. Property has to be held for five years before we can deal with it. So I actually have a map in my office that we update. I got three years left on this one, I got two years left on that one. It has to be there for five years, adjudicated to the city before Civic Source takes it. And the reason we use Civic Source, we haven't had this conversation in a while, is because it's the only way we can get a clear title. In other words, Civic Source takes it, they also own a title company. If you brought some of this generational property to a lawyer here in town and said, I want a clear title, there's not anybody that would fool with it. Because it's just so many people to contact, it's so convoluted, it's so many generations. Civic Source, because they own their own title company, says, oh, no, we'll cover that, we'll write the insurance on that, and they handle it. So Civic Source charges you a pretty penny to do that, it's not free. But it is a way that when we sell a piece of property, it can actually go back into community use cuz it's got a marketable title.
Okay.
But a lot of the properties we fool with are not adjudicated properties. They are just properties that people let them run down, they, they didn't do their due diligence and they weren't good stewards to the property and now it's affecting the neighborhood.
Okay.
But it's two different pots, basically.
That's what I wasn't understanding.
I understand, I understand.
Yeah.
Uh, Jeff, I got that right?
Yeah.
All right, so your hands up.
It's two different, it's two different problems. And we actually have one property on the list, I believe, that recently sold, was recently sold by Civic Source to some individual. So we're gonna find out whether or not they're gonna come through and, um, and fix it.
Okay.
So putting it on Civic Source does not solve the demolition problem.
Oh, and it, yeah, yeah.
Gotcha.
Or adjudicated property problem in, 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 in any big fashion.
Yeah, she knew of another city, shit's all in line where they, uh, get rid of all the taxes, basically what Civic Source does, I guess, right? You don't owe all the back taxes.
Well, we, we collect them when they sell the property.
Really?
Yeah, we, we got, I got two.
On Civic Source?
Uh huh, well, that's the whole point.
Oh.
Now, you don't collect that much and you don't know what you're gonna get, but one, it's gotta sell. But at that point, that's when we get reimbursed. I got two checks in, we put all that money back in the demolition. We got two checks in this week, I think five thousand dollars or something like that, it's never a huge amount. The very good properties went soon. When we first started with Civic Source, their, people picked the cherries, I mean, they picked the low, the, the easy buildings. So the nice buildings went first. Most of what we have now are selling for less money because they're not as attractive or they need more work or, you know, whatever.
Okay, gotcha.
This one was adjudicated from the city for twenty-seventeen taxes and the parish for twenty-eighteen taxes.
Okay.
But hadn't made the five years yet.
Right.
Gotcha.
Right.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Oh, no, good question.
Hey, Jeff, so a property with, an owner and a residence owns a different structure on that property and we dem, we demolished it and we're gonna hold a lien against the property owner?
Against the real estate.
Okay, that's what I'm asking you.
Yeah.
All right.
If you've got a trailer.
I wonder how you can do that.
Yeah, if you have a trailer on a piece of property and, um, you have to give notice to the property owner because they could suffer the lien if we go do the work and we need to get on their property. But we also have to give notice to the building owner if it's a separate building owner cuz they're gonna lose their building. So after we demolish the trailer, the mobile home, there's nothing to lien as far as the mobile home's concerned. There's only the land. So we have to give notice to both of them.
Okay, and we have, last time I counted, a hundred and sixteen adjudicated pieces of property with trailers on them, just to tell you.
Yeah, and some of those are gonna have separate owners, some will be the same owner. And we have both of those situations in this list.
Yeah.
So may I ask a question about that? Suppose they sell one of those properties, uh, and they had a trailer on it, so how does that affect them being able to put a tra, another trailer on it if they take that one off?
They got six months.
So they can replace it with another one?
You have six months that if a trailer leaves, you can replace the trailer. So if someone would buy that property and we, you know, could move on it, they could put another trailer.
Okay, that's good to know.
Cuz I have told people that when they complain that, you know, I can't put a trailer. Well, there's, I don't know how you work out all the details of it, but there's a hundred and sixteen opportunities, but they also have a timeframe and, you know, like I said, we have to hold them for five years, but it's complicated.
Okay.
Any more discussion on this property? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank y'all. Good discussion. Madam Clerk? Eight C.
Resolution twenty-one dash sixty-three, declaring that the building at five-one-five Daigle Street, New Iberia, Louisiana, seven-oh-five-six-oh, District Two, is in a dilapidated and dangerous condition and to set date for public hearing on October fifth, twenty-twenty-one.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Lewis, do I have a second?
Second.
Who was it, Ty? I don't know, I don't know where to win. Councilwoman Markott. Jimmy?
This house burnt, burnt twelve fifteen of sixteen.
That's accorded from audience seventeen.
Okay. All right. Any discussion? No discussion? No comment? Okay. Yes, sir.
Yeah.
It is. Oh, I, so basically, when was this prop, when was this property sold to Mr., uh, Delcum? Do you know that? Like, how long has he been having this property?
There was a cash sale in twenty-seventeen.
Yeah, we don't have the whole history, but it looks like twenty-seventeen.
So he's been having it for three, four years?
That's what it looks like, yeah.
Okay, that's all I need, that's what I wanted to know.
Yeah, that's fine.
He hasn't done anything with it.
Right, okay.
Anybody else?
And again.
Yes, sir.
That's why we want the property owners to come.
Yeah. Thank you, Jim.
And this is one that's not adjudicated, it's just burnt and it needs to.
Yeah.
Yes.
Be repaired or demolished.
Yes.
Four, five years.
Yes, been in this condition for four years.
Yeah, I remember that one.
Okay. Well, if there's no other discussion, then I'll ask you to vote your machines and we'll move this one forward. Thank y'all. Eight D.
Resolution twenty-one sixty-four, declaring that the building at one-thirty-six West Dale Street, New Iberia, Louisiana, seven-oh-five-six-oh, in District Three, is in a dilapidated and dangerous condition and to set date for public hearing on October fifth, twenty-twenty-one.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Markott, a second by Councilman Lewis. Do we have any discussion on this item?
Uh, well, one, it's, I think that's District Five, cuz.
Oh, it's District Five? Says District Three on our.
Yeah, I think it's District Five, cuz, yeah, it's, it's one of mine, I, I turned it in, that's.
Okay.
I'm glad to see it up there, though. Yep.
The one already called, when I put the sign on the house, the owner called us, or he went off.
Really?
He didn't think it should come down.
Give me his number.
Yeah, he's right here.
Okay.
He owns several of them, Dee Dee.
Was there any discussion on this property?
Now, this has been, I, I get a lot of complaints about this property.
Mm-hmm.
Because it's on a main street, people, like, they can't believe it's still sitting there.
As the tree fell across it.
Yeah.
Okay. Hearing no other discussion, then I would ask you to vote your machines. Thank y'all. Now we go to eight E.
Resolution twenty-one sixty-five, declaring that the building at one-oh-three Doris Street, in New Iberia, Louisiana, seven-oh-five-six-oh, District Three, is in a dilapidated and dangerous condition and to set date for public hearing on October fifth, twenty-twenty-one.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Markott and a second, I think, by Councilman, where? Do we have any discussion on this? Well, Jimmy, tell us about it first.
Yeah, it's a lot of rot, uh, termite damage, the windows are busted. Uh, I get complaints all the time of people going in and out of it.
This is in Mr. Bruce Arz's district?
Yeah.
Okay. So any discussion on it? Yes, sir.
We already know what he would want. He's not here to defend himself, so we.
See it. Well, if there's no other discussion, please vote your machines. Thank y'all. Eight F.
Resolution twenty-one sixty-six, declaring that the buildings at eight-oh-nine Edna Street, New Iberia, Louisiana, seven-oh-five-six-oh, in District Five, is in a dilapidated and dangerous condition and to set for public hearing on October fifth, twenty-twenty-one.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Reed and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalas. Is there any discussion? I mean, Jimmy, go ahead first.
The porch is falling down, it's all, it's dilapidated, the windows are broken. The neighbors are hollering and screaming.
Okay.
This one and the next one.
Okay.
Yeah, they're right next to each other.
All right, any discussion on this one? And I would ask you to please vote your machines. Thank y'all. Eight G.
Resolution twenty-one sixty-seven, declaring that the building at eight-eleven Edna Street, New Iberia, Louisiana, seven-oh-five-six-oh, in District Three, is in a dilapidated and dangerous condition and to set date for public hearing on October fifth, twenty-twenty-one.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Reed, a second by Mayor Pro Tim Gonsalas. Jimmy?
I think this is the one Jeff was referring to that somebody just purchased it.
A pile of trees?
Cuz you had a city of New Iberia.
The porch is falling off, the, the windows are broken.
I thank him for buying it.
We get a lot of complaints, I get calls all the time about these.
Yeah, I get gra, I cut grass every year.
Yeah.
Well, hopefully that goes through. So Jeff, how do we proceed on this one? Should we just keep going like we are right now?
We do.
Okay. Any other discussion? And I would ask you to please, uh, vote your machines. Thank y'all. And our last one for tonight, eight H.
Resolution twenty-one sixty-eight, declaring that the buildings at address seven-twenty A Bear Street, New Iberia, Louisiana, seven-oh-five-six-oh, in District Two, is in a dilapidated and dangerous condition and to set date for public hearing on October fifth, twenty-twenty-one.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Lewis, do I have a second? Councilwoman Markott. Jimmy?
This is another trailer. That is, this is another trailer, the porch, you can't walk on the porch, the roof's coming off the trailer, it's raining inside, windows are broken.
Thank you. Any discussion? No discussion? Okay. Then I'd ask you all to please vote your machines. Thank y'all very much.
Can I ask a quick question?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Um, why do we, why do we give them so much time before a public comment? I mean, it's October fifth, I'm just, I don't understand the process.
Part of the reason is I have to notify them.
Okay.
So I have to wait for Jeff to give me the owner's information. And it takes the post office anywhere from a couple of months usually to make sure they get service.
Okay.
And I send, I send registered letters, certified letters and regular mail. Sometimes the regular mail comes out back after we have the.
Okay.
So I'm trying to give them enough time to.
Yeah.
To where they get their notification.
And we broke, we have what, seven coming at next meeting?
Uh, yeah, I think it's seven.
Yeah, and so we doing, to try not to do them all at one meeting, so we'll do seven at the next and then after that, we have, you know, the rest of the process.
These are for October the fifteenth.
Yeah.
Fifth, uh, next batch will come in for the week, the second meeting, October.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
That's it?
Yeah, I just wanted to understand the process.
Yeah, it's not fast.
I'm learning.
We're hoping once they get notified, they'll call us.
Okay.
And then we can get them to do something or tear it down on their.
Yeah, I know, and sometimes we do, sometimes it's a victory. That's why in the in-between, when Jimmy has nothing to do, I like him to bring me other pictures of houses that, cuz a couple of times you brought those and we never had to do anything and somebody either tore them down or, you know, did something.
Yeah.
Excellent.
So anyway, now we'll go to item nine, Councilmember Park, more remarks. I'll start with, uh, Brooke.
Okay, I just wanna remind District One that we're having our CERT training on July seventeenth. That's from eight AM to one PM. And that'll be at the Willowood Recreation Building. Uh, to sign up, you just go to our District One Facebook page and there is an easy little form to fill out right there. That's it.
Thank you.
Freddie, I know this not on the agenda, uh, I'mma, I'mma do like my councilman. I mean, I, I wanna see us address the fireworks issue in the city. I know we passed ordinances years ago to ban fireworks in the city, but I promise you, it's illegal. It's legal. It, fireworks are legal. So that's my comment, that's my councilman remark, so. We, we need to, we need to address that issue. Uh, it don't, they don't mix well with the gun violence in the cities, in the inner cities. It don't mix well. I, I don't know how to, and look, I'm, when I get the calls, I'm, I'm pretty much taking up fireworks, police department because I get it. We got six districts and they're doing it everywhere and we only got so many offices and it's like cat and mouse. We pop, y'all come, y'all leave, we pop again. You know, I, I get that, but we have to do, we have to address, address it somewhere. You know, it's an, if it's an issue.
Right.
It seems like an issue in, in, in District Two for sure.
I'll tell you that we had a discussion about that this morning at our administrative police meeting. It's not an easy fix because I'll tell you that you're right, we have quite a few districts. Uh, the other problem is because some people are enjoying illegally popping fireworks, the rest of our town that decides to conduct illegal activity is still in full gear. So one of our issues is, do you prioritize? Do you go to a fireworks call or do you go to a call that is some crime in progress? Or as they're patrolling, do you go to a fireworks call or you see something going on that kinda supersedes that? That's part of the issue. The other part of the issue is by the time the police are called and they're rolling up, cuz I've seen it happen more than once, if they don't catch them in the act of popping fireworks, there, there's no, there's nothing to cite. Do I watch the cat and mouse game?
Do I watch the cat and mouse game? Yeah. Do, uh, it wasn't an ordinance? I mean, I, it's, it's on the books, and we have to try, but it wasn't an ordinance. I didn't think it was enforceable when we passed it. It is going, it's a tough thing to do. I'm not taking up anybody. I'm not making excuses, but it is very tough to roll this whole city with the amount of crime that we have and say, "I'm gonna go out and stop everybody from popping fireworks." It's all over, and I don't think it's just a problem or just an, you don't hear it just in District Two. You know? My neighbors were ripping and running. I couldn't go to sleep. Uh, it's everywhere. I mean, it's all over, every district. It, it, it's, you know, it is a problem. We could have a whole discussion on that. We would need to get law enforcement involved in that discussion because they are, you know, the organization, they are our department that it all falls on. But I can tell you that it's, it's complicated because, you know, I've been the mayor for four years, and we have had these calls and these discussions behind the scenes, and people have come to my office upset about it, uh, kind of in both. There still are people who wish we could pop fireworks. So, you have some of that. Then you have people who are saying, you know, "You didn't enforce this." We were analyzing and looking at the amount of crime, and that's the first thing we're doing. We're looking at the amount of crime that occurs in the times that you get. It's not very many. The window of opportunity to pop fireworks shouldn't be that great, but, you know, they were popping them last night. They were, you know, it's, I got some left over, so I might as well burn them up. It is more than just one day. They'll be popping them for a week. Like I said, if we had no other crimes to tend to, and we were, you know, uh, I love my town, but we were a quieter community, it would be easier because I could dedicate, the police officer could dedicate more people, you know, to that. But right now, it's a, it's a, it's, it's a problem. I know it is. And it's on the books. I don't want it denied. I don't want to say, hey, you know, but it is, uh, not an easy thing to enforce. It's gonna be a big discussion when we have it. But thanks for bringing it up.
Maybe we should make it legal.
Well, that's the other choice. But that's, you know, that's a whole discussion for another day. I can tell you the, uh, people's opinions were heated. I was here when they made it, you know, that you couldn't pop fireworks, and myself and one other person, I was a, I was sitting in Ricky's seat, uh, myself and one other person voted to keep fireworks, not to, to ban them, and everybody else voted to ban them. So, it's an uphill battle once something's in place, and it was, it was a pretty heated discussion. You know, we're back and forth. Everybody had their reasons. Anything else?
That's it, man.
Okay, well, that, that was a, that was enough of a firecracker. Thank you. Ricky?
Yeah, I just, just to echo on, on what Freddie said, you know, one of my favorite comments is when you're passing a resolution is, is, you know, do you truly think it's enforceable?
Right.
You know, can you enforce it? I mean, we can pass all the laws and regulations we want, but if we can't enforce them, we're good already. And, and it's a challenge to enforce them, and I get it, and, you know, I got a couple of calls too, but it is, but, you know, you, you something you, you gotta try to address as your best way possible, but sometimes you can't address them. But anyway, uh, on another note, uh, just kind of looking over the sales tax collections that we just received today, you know, I always say that, you know, a growing community has to collect its fair share of taxes, but when you see these numbers, you know, eight point eight percent up in June, nine point two nine for the year, and we still got four months left, compared to two thousand and twenty in June, we were, you know, minus point oh three and a, a one point six nine for the year. So, you know, our community is, is staying home, is spending at home, investing, so that lets us know that we can continue to provide above, above level services to our constituents and continue to try to grow our community, you know, with these kind of sales taxes. So, you know, I'm proud of what this council's doing, and what our community's doing is buying into what we're doing.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, uh, please contact your state legislators and let them know, uh, if you are against SB, uh, one eighteen, which allows permitless carry of firearms with no training. Law enforcement and, um, many municipalities are against this bill because it will potentially cause more violence in our communities. We're searching for solutions, not more problems. Let's continue to pray for Danny Finster, as he still remains jailed for being a truthful and dedicated journalist in Myanmar. Ephesians six fourteen says, "Stand your ground, putting on the belt of truth, and having put on the breastplate of righteousness." That is what Danny has done. People here in the United States should take, uh, a good look at Myanmar and take heed. Matthew seven fifteen says, "Beware of false prophets who come to you in sheep's clothing, but underneath are ravenous wolves." Lastly, get vaccinated if you haven't already done so. I'm fully vi- vaccinated, but I wear the mask because less than thirty percent of adults in this area have been vaccinated, and I see eighty to ninety to ninety-five percent of people maskless. So, uh, I'm protecting myself from those people who are not vaccinated. So, please get vaccinated, so I'll be comfortable, and some more of us will be comfortable with going maskless. Thank you. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you.
Um, I just, well, kind of continue what DeeDee just said. We have a wellness, uh, Health and Wellness Day this Saturday at Weston Park. They are gonna be vaccinating people. They're gonna be testing people. They're going to have mental health services there, all type of preventive health services, like if you, you know, diabetes, high blood pressure, you get information on all those things. There's gonna be face painting for the kids, music, games, uh, and so much more. And I hope that the public will come out this Saturday. It's from ten AM to two PM in the Weston Park, and take advantage of all these resources so that we can all get healthy together, um, and stop the spread of COVID. The other thing is, is that I just want to let the public know that we are having our first, uh, event downtown, uh, the Downtown Neighborhood Association. On July thirty-first, we're gonna be doing a cleanup, grass cutting, and painting of houses, and we are looking for volunteers from all over the city to come out and help us. We also need donations, so if you have, give some money you want to spend on some paintbrushes or scrapers or garbage bags or gloves, any of those things, uh, you can contact me directly. Uh, I'll accept the donations, and, um, we hope that you all come and help us to start. It's a grassroots effort to start revitalizing that community on Anne Street. Thank you.
Thank you.
Justin?
I have none tonight. Thank you all.
Great. I don't really either. Next meeting is July twentieth, and I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Thank you all.